I want to call to order the council meeting of February 13th, 2017. Please call the roll.
Rich Bardock.
Here.
Peg Conway.
Here.
Ed Hattenbach.
Here.
Alita Kaymine.
Here.
Tom Muthing.
Here.
Ray Warren.
Here.
Natalie Wolfe.
Here.
Scott Larmour.
Here.
Kevin Frank.
Here.
Chief Wallace.
Here.
If everyone please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. First item on the agenda tonight is our minutes from our last meeting in January. The minutes were distributed in the package to all council members. Are there any changes, additions, deletions to the minutes? Seeing that there are none, we consider the minutes approved. Next we'll move on to the finance report for the month of December.
Included in your packet was the finance report for December. I'd like to talk about it tonight in terms of the end of 2016, so sort of give a end-of-year summary. So with December revenues of $333,000, the revenue for 2016 totaled $5.5 million for the year. So this is up nearly $1 million from 2015. Now, most of our revenues come from the earnings tax. So $3.5 million was collected in 2016, and that compares to $2.7 million in 2015, the year before. It's probably worth noting that the tax refunds were nearly $200,000 this past year, which effectively brings the net of our earnings tax to about $3.3 million. But the increase in the earnings tax from 2015 came from residents withholding and net profits. So all three of those categories, the Finance Department looked at on a quarterly basis, there was an increase in all three of those categories. As I had always advised the Finance Committee, that the conclusion is not to look at earnings tax collections in a snapshot, but to look at them on a continuum. So when you take a snapshot, it does not give you the accurate picture. But when we look at them on a continuum, we can typically identify trends, and that's what we have done with the earnings tax this past year. And I think probably the most notable item is that there was a change to the deadlines for earnings tax. And so we believe that we have been affected by that. So I think we can expect that in 2017, the earnings tax collection will be down a little bit based on what we had collected in 2016. But we do anticipate that the earnings tax will continue to do well in 2017. We do not anticipate the type of growth that we saw in 2016, but we'd have estimated the earnings tax revenue at $3 million for 2017. So in regards to the other sources of revenue, we do receive... The earnings tax is the most significant source of revenue, but we also have revenues that come from the property tax. So this past year, we realized revenue in the amount of $954,000. We also received the money through the homestead exemption, which is tied to the property tax, and that was about $147,000. One of our newer revenue sources is the Joint Economic Development Zone, and last year that generated $109,000. The cell tower at the north site generated a little over $120,000. There was monies that were included in that particular line item that were actually a calculation from previous years. So there was some additional monies in there that we cannot expect on an annual basis, but the cell tower at the north site is doing extremely well for the village. Court fines were about $69,000 last year. Cable franchise fees, $56,000. Local government fund, which is about the only funds we get from the state now, were about $58,000. And it looks like we have stabilized at that particular level for local government funds. And then another column that has... Another item that has not been significant for us the past few years is interest. Obviously, the interest rates have been down. Our portfolio has not been all that great, but we've worked on building up the portfolio. Interest rates are coming up a little bit. But this past year, we collected about $45,000 in interest. So that now becomes a more significant dollar amount for us. So all total, about $5.4 million in revenues for the general fund for 2016. On the expense side of the equation, the December expenses are always high, and this was true in December of 2016, at expenses of $636,000. And that brought our total spending for the general fund for the year at $4.2 million. $4.7 million had been budgeted, council appropriated $4.7 million, so we did not spend all of the money that council appropriated, so that's a good sign. And then built into that $4.7 million was the transfer to the capital fund, to the street fund, and also to the employee severance fund. And those transfers did occur, so that's a significant dollar amount that gets transferred. The $4.2 million expenses that we had in 2016 is the same amount that we experienced in 2015. So I think that's notable to mention as well. I think it's notable for one, because the employees all did receive a 2% pay increase, but yet we were able to keep our expenses in line with the previous year. So I think it's another indication that the village does have a good handle on controlling its expenses. Our largest expense is the police department. And without the $1.6 million in police levy monies, the village would have spent more than our general fund takes in. So the police levy is critical to our operations here in the village. So the total expenditures for the police department budget was $2.7 million in 2016. So that means that the general fund paid $1 million of that $2.7 million expense, and the levy picked up the balance of it. In regards to other areas where the... I think the village has excelled. One would be in the area of grants. I think the village has done an outstanding job in pursuing grants, and we've done that with the assistance of resident Sandy Pylwin, who assists us in that process. And so this is an opportunity to get some of those dollars, obtain some of those dollars, claim them for us, and bring those tax dollars back to the village. With revenues being up and then controlling our expenditures, we ended 2016 with an unencumbered general fund balance of $5.4 million. So I think we're pleased with where we landed on the revenue and expense side for the balance sheet. And I just want to mention that our annual financial statement is a document that we're required to publish, and we actually advertise it in the paper. We're required to do that. And the document is actually available at our administration window. It is also available online if residents want to take a look at that. And then I would also just remind residents that we do have open gov and open checkbook on our website. So if residents want to take a closer look at our revenues or expenses, there's the opportunity to do that by going to amberlyvillage.org. And that concludes the finance report.
Any questions for the meeting?
Can I ask one? Could you repeat how much revenue came from the Jeds?
That would be $109,000 in 2016.
Some follow-up questions on the earnings revenue. Do we have any... Do we have any data on... We're a small village, but nonetheless, would we have any data on employment figures? Do we have more employment in the village in the last year? Do we have more withholdings in the last year? Just to get some statistics, demographics, in terms of what might be going on in the village over the last year or last two years?
In terms of number of employees, we have not seen that increase. In fact, this past year, we lost two employers. We lost Saturday Night Limited, so we had a loss there. That was for about half of 2016. And then we also had a loss with Procter &amp; Gamble. They contracted out some of their operations, so we had a loss there as well. But overall, the withholding increased. What's unique about Amberly Village is a lot of our revenue comes from residents. So as you have seen here, when we had to appropriate additional monies on the tax refund a few months ago, one resident can certainly impact the village. And that's what we enjoy here, is that residents have the opportunity here to... Obviously, they file their taxes, but one of those residents can significantly affect how well we do or how poor we do in terms of our collection. So it would not... It would be tied more into the withholding. But as I mentioned, the net profit was up, as well as the withholding in the residence.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, we will now move on to the next item, which we have a citizen to speak, so I invite Mrs. Levine forward to speak.
My name is Diane Levine, and I live at 6770 Fair Acres Lane. And it would be very nice if Amberly would keep up with some of the other communities, and it wouldn't be a very expensive project to turn one or two of those tennis courts to the left of this building into pickleball courts. It's something new that's happening around the city, and it would be a nice thing for the village. It would cost very little money. Thank you.
Are there any questions?
Yeah, I don't know what pickleball is.
I didn't either until somebody else told me. It's a much less aggressive form of tennis. And you play with a little paddle, and the court is considerably smaller. And I gave everybody a description of what they are.
I do know that a number of communities...
Yeah, Wyoming has one. My son told me about that.
And are you aware of, within Amberly, of any people that have started asking for this?
Just people that I know would like... We would like to do it. It's easier on your body than tennis.
Thank you for bringing this forward. I'm the chair. My name is Peg Conway. I'm the chair of the Public Buildings and Parks Committee. So I imagine it will be our committee who will look into this.
I can't hear you.
Sorry. My name is Peg Conway, and I'm the chair of the Public Buildings and Parks Committee. And I thank you for bringing this forward, and it will be our committee that will be charged with looking into it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. We'll now move on to committee reports, and first we will have a report from the Streets, Public Utilities, and Sewers Committee.
Thank you. Let me just scroll this up. Thank you. The Streets, Public Utilities, and Sewer Committee met on February 1st. There were three items on our agenda that also appear on today's agenda. The first item I'll talk about is the village mowing contract for 2017. Mr. West Brown solicited... Do you hear me?
Speed rating.
It is on. Is this better? Is this... Okay. All right. So I'll start from the beginning. So the Streets, Public Utilities, and Sewer Committee met on February 1st, and there were three items on our agenda that appear on this evening's agenda. The first item I'll talk about will be... Is the 2017 village mowing contract. Mr. West Brown solicited and received quotes... And this is also in your packet with all the details, so I won't go through all the details here. But received quotes from the same three companies that provided services to the village last year, with no change in rates. Quotes were submitted to do the same work. That is, those who manage the Amberly Green, that same provider submitted a quote for this year and was the only vendor that submitted a quote. And that applied to all three areas. Not only was there no change in the rates for the upcoming mowing season across all three areas that we deal with, but a renewable option for 2018 was also obtained at the same rate, if we wish to exercise it. So it was recommended that the Amberly Green contract be awarded to MS Lawn Care. This includes the mowing of the inner property that generally covers the former fairways, generally cut every 10 days. The outer property that includes the building areas and the Amberly Garden, generally cut weekly. And the meadowlands, which involve bush hogging generally once a season. Based on the 2016 experience, we anticipate the cost to be approximately $37,000. The second area that was recommended was associated with managing the north site and the village rite of ways. This contract is recommended to be awarded to Frederick's Landscaping. Based on the 2016 experience, we anticipate the cost to be approximately $21,000. And the third area is associated with the municipal building grounds, as well as the grounds around the municipal building, ball fields, tennis court, things like that. And that contract is recommending to be awarded to Grateful Growers. Again, based on the 2016 experience, we anticipate the cost to be approximately $10,000. Now, the proposal before council is to accept the contract from each vendor on a per-cut basis. So we're not... We're not... The proposal is not to spend this large amount of money, but actually... Well, probably will spend this large amount of money, but it will be based on how many mowing operations occur. So before us, we have Resolution 2017-1. Resolution authorizing the village manager to enter into a contract for mowing services for 2017.
It has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2017-1, authorizing the village manager to enter into contract for mowing services. Are there any questions or comments?
Oh, here's my question.
Ed, I just think it's always useful when you do recuse yourself to state the reason why. Any other questions or comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2017-1. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Being noted that the resolution passes unanimously with one abstention.
Next item on the agenda is the acceptance of the 2017 rate schedule for CT consultants. You know, CT consultants is our engineering consultants for the village. Mr. Larmour, at our committee meeting, shared the CT proposal with the committee, and the details of which are before you. And CT proposed to continue their services at a slightly adjusted rate increase, depending on the specific service, anywhere from no change, that is, a 0% increase, to up to a 3% increase. And so before you, you have Resolution 2017-2, approving the amended CT consultant's fee schedule. And that is a motion to approve Resolution 2017-2.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2017-2, which amends the rate schedule for CT consultants. Are there any questions or comments?
Just note that they've been our engineers for 29 years. They did have a name change a couple of years ago, but this is pretty business as usual.
And I think it's also worth noting that this is the first increase in four years. Any other questions or comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2017-2. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Being noted that the resolution passes unanimously.
Before I get to the third item, I just wanted to make a comment. And I think it's important to note that for many of the services that the village contracts out, specifically these two that I just mentioned, that the rate increase is essentially zero to marginal. And so in terms of how we plan our finances, you know, moving forward, I just want to applaud our village staff in terms of being able to secure these types of contracts, where we don't see, as I said, we see either no change in service cost or really a marginal change in service cost, with no change in service provided to the village. So again, thank you to the staff. The third item on the agenda is we're not looking to pass a resolution, but really to provide information to council and the community, and that is the 2017 stormwater program. The program was reviewed by the committee after the Stormwater Advisory Committee had reviewed the proposals for 2017. The Stormwater Advisory Committee met on January 31st. And Mr. West Brown presented the work plan to the committee, and basically, the anticipated budget for 2017 is approximately $260,000. These funds are primarily derived from our stormwater fee collection. There are three major projects that are being planned. One includes the replacement of pipe and installation of pipeliners in the area of 2470 Section Road. Second is the installation of pipeliners and regrading the swale in the area of 3260 Fairhaven Lane. And third is the installation of a pipeliner in the area of 3300 Fairhaven Lane. There's additional work that's going to be completed at the Section Road and Farm Acres Drive intersection. That work was delayed, as we reported earlier, due to unanticipated pipe erosion issues on the north side of Section Road. And that was amplified by Cincinnati Waterline bursting several weeks ago in that same vicinity. Other work for the year includes the final phase of the stormwater pipe televising. This program, which started three years ago, is an excellent preventive maintenance procedure that allows us to diagnose the state of our stormwater pipe system, and if necessary, intervene immediately or plan for intervention. With completion of this phase, we anticipate returning to this procedure in about 10 years. The program... Our stormwater program also includes the Maintenance Department, repair projects, and annual charges from the Hamilton County Stormwater District. Now, as I mentioned before, we're not seeking any votes this evening, but as contracts are awarded, the Stormwater Committee will come back to council for their approval. Thank you.
Any questions? If not, we'll move on to the finance committee.
Thank you, Mayor. This evening, I have a potential ordinance to present. We received a... Amberly Village is a member of the Hamilton County Police Association. Through this organization, the Amberly is able to partner and share resources with other police departments throughout the county. HCPA funds such items as SWAT, the SWAT team, Honor Guard, underwater search and rescue. Our police officer, Chris Fritch, is a member of the HCPA dive team, and he is able to secure a $75,000 donation for the purchase of a dive boat. What's so important about the dive boat is, last year, we had a car... There was a car which went off the Interstate 75 Bridge downriver from Coney Island, and this particular boat would be a lot stronger to be utilized in this process. Accordingly, I would like to introduce ordinance number 2017-4, an ordinance amending appropriations for the fiscal year 2017 to purchase the boat with the donation of $75,000.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance 2017-4, which would amend appropriations for fiscal year 2017 and allow the purchase of the boat that results from the contribution. Are there... Go ahead.
Is this person going... The person who donated these funds, is this person going to be recognized in some fashion?
The recognition, as I understand it, is going to be that the donor's name will appear on the boat.
It was not an Amberly resident.
Okay.
That's what I understood.
I thought the donor... There is a name for the boat, but the donor, as I remember, specifically wanted anonymous.
Yeah, that's correct. There was a second donation that came through that could go through the association, which I'm on the board for, Hamilton County Police Association as well. And it was a smaller donation to pay for the equipment that'll be with the boat.
I think it's worth noting that this type of setup is similar to what is... How the SWAT truck is handled, how donations to the Honor Guard. Other communities will end up, as a result of contributions, owning the specific asset and then allow the Hamilton County Police Association to use it. But the Hamilton County Police Association, because they are not a nonprofit organization, cannot own the boat. It has to be done by a community that is a nonprofit to allow the donor to get the deductibility of the donation. And so that's why this particular setup.
And with that, all the repairs for the boat will come through the Hamilton County Police Association. Nothing will be on the village, as well as the insurance, and everything is all covered through the Police Association as well.
That's correct.
Okay, is there any other questions or comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance 2017-4. Please call the roll.
Rich Bardock.
Yes.
Peg Conway.
Yes.
Ed Hattenbach.
Yes.
Alita Kaymine.
Yes.
Tom Muthing.
Yes.
Ray Warren.
Yes.
Natalie Wolfe.
Yes.
Can we just take just one question? Should we have waived the three readings on this? Because it's a finance... Because it's... Okay. Good. Lack of police, my report. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now move on to the managers' report.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to mention three items out of the village manager's report. The first is that the village is updating its... The functionality of its website. And we are seeking input from residents about what they like and do not like about our website before we move to a new platform for our website. And we had a survey that was linked with the e-news that went out in February, and we have extended the deadline from today until February the 20th. So we're still accepting comments from residents. So we encourage residents to get on there and give us your feedback. So we would like to have that before we redesign our website. But primarily, we want to be able to update the functionality of it, tying it into... With devices that are mobile devices, so making it more compatible. Second item I wanted to mention is in regards to... Or commend one of our officers. Police Fire Officer Nick Mercer was driving with his family on Ronald Reagan Highway and happened upon an accident last month. It had just occurred. Obviously, he's one of our officers here, and he was off duty. But this particular vehicle that he came upon was on its side, and the driver was trapped. And Officer Mercer stopped his van and assisted the male driver, who had his legs trapped underneath the steering wheel. Obviously, Nick is trained in this area as an Amberly officer. But he was able to unhook the seat belt. He was able to move the seat back without causing injury to the driver, and he was able to free the driver from that particular entrapment. And so while this was happening, another passerby stopped to assist as well. The driver was freed and was uninjured in the accident, and Officer Mercer stayed there until the responding jurisdiction could arrive. So I just wanted to commend Officer Nick Mercer on those heroic efforts as a resident. And then the last item I wanted to mention is to acknowledge and applaud our police fire chief, Rich Wallace. He has served as the secretary and also as the vice president of the Hamilton County Chiefs of Police Association. But this past few months, he was elected as the president of the Ohio... Of the Police Chiefs Association. So I want to commend him for stepping up to this responsibility that he will have for this next year. So congratulations, chief. Thank you. And that's all I have.
Are there any questions for the manager?
On the... And congratulations, chief. Thank you.
Thanks.
So on the first point, just since we're extending it, just wanted to make a plug to maybe put that on our social media next door on our Facebook page, the link to the survey, so that people can fill that out. Strong people with strong feelings about our websites. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, if not, I believe there's no chief's report this evening?
No.
Okay. We'll move on to the mayor's report. First, with respect to the Environmental Stewardship Committee. The committee met on January 1st. The committee met on January 23rd, and the next meeting will be February 27th at 7:00 PM in the community room. The main items that were discussed at the January 23rd meeting and what I want to report on are on upcoming programs. This coming Sunday at 2:00 down in the community room, there will be a showing of a excellent video, which was developed, I think, about two years ago. It's called Trees in Trouble. It's very much focused on the situation with trees in our particular area in southwestern Ohio and the challenges faced in our urban trees because of blight like the Emerald Ash Pour and others. Following the showing of that video, there will be a discussion led by Wendy Van Buren from the Ohio Department of Natural Resources, talking about, you know, what residents can do to kind of help address, help out in this situation as far as plantings and things like that. And again, that's this Sunday at 2:00 PM down in the community room. Secondly, there is the annual One Stop Drop, which is our recycling event, will be on Sunday, April 22nd. It will again occur from noon to 4:00. Very similar items are being collected this year, as have been collected in prior years. The details are available on our website, and we do, as always, appreciate any volunteers that will help. It is a fun day for volunteers to help out at the event, and we are, you know, we definitely had some issues last year with some traffic, and the chief has been working with us to try to make it a better situation this year. The good news is the traffic was indicative of the amount of demand. The bad news is we had traffic on Rich Row.
Can you repeat the date, please? The date?
The date is April 2nd.
2nd.
It's a Sunday.
Oh, you said the 2nd.
I'm sorry. April 2nd at -- from noon to 4:00. And finally, the annual Arbor Day program will occur on April 24th, and there will be details posted on our website for that. Next item I wanted to deal with is I reported last month that with the unfortunate passing of Stan Cohen, and because of the passing of Stan Cohen, we have a vacancy on the Stormwater Advisory Committee. Stan's position was a posting that was through December of 2019, and I'd hereby like to nominate former Councilman Bill Doring for that vacancy, to fill that vacancy, which will run through December of 2019. Okay, it has been moved and seconded. This is a council appointment, so we have before us a motion and a second to nominate -- to place Bill Doring on that open seat for the Stormwater Advisory Committee. Are there any questions or comments?
And this is not going to affect his health insurance?
It does not. It does not.
Well, I do have something to say, because I think that Bill is well-suited for this job, because I don't think any of the rest of us has ever walked through the pipes like Bill has. Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion before us, and it has been seconded to place Bill Doring on the open seat for the Stormwater Advisory Committee. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Being noted that that passes unanimously. And finally, I reported last month that I would, this month, kind of report on kind of council over the past year. I've done this the past few years, and so I'd like to kind of give a short report on kind of the activities of council and look forward to 2017 as far as our priorities. In 2016, council met 14 times. This was in addition to the normal 12 times. The primary reason was to fill the vacancy on council that was ably filled by Councilwoman Kamine. We had 66 council committee meetings across the year. Last January, we agreed that there were three primary priorities, and when I talk about priorities, these are in addition to the normal things like the pedestrian safety that has become a normal thing, the police and fire committee making sure that we meet and talk about are police appropriately equipped to handle the job. But in addition to those regular priorities, we had three that we had identified. One was to develop a plan for the police levy, and this plan was developed and approved by council in 2016, and the levy, which will be at a reduced level, will be on the ballot this coming May. So that was achieved. The next item was to become clearer as to the North Site and Amberly Green developments, and the lease on the North Site was approved by council. This lease was entered in -- or has it been entered into? Okay. The lease was approved by council with Sherman Properties. That lease will provide for the development of a medical office building, which will provide additional revenues to the village of probably between $50,000 and $60,000. And is the right kind of thing to do on the North Site with its traffic challenges, because a medical office building will not add to peak traffic and definitely, given the traffic study that we had done in 2016, we had to avoid any additional peak traffic. With respect to Amberly Green, we're continuing to work with the Jewish Community Center on a good first step. I think council is in agreement that this is a very good first step. We have received back the report from the engineer and the clubhouse is structurally, it does have good integrity. So that is something that the JCC is now looking at as far as the possibility of continuing to be able to use that. So that will continue to be something that will carry on into 2017. And then the final thing we said we really wanted to focus on was communication, and we said especially with respect to Amberly Green and village financials. We did hold two town halls on June 2nd. We had one in the afternoon and one in the evening, and we're very much focused on that. And these do continue to be the subjects of our -- both our print newsletter and our e-news. So again, I think overall, I would say 2016 was a good year, and we did continue to move forward. Regarding 2017, where I see the priorities will clearly be the former Gibson property and Amberly Green will clearly be priorities. I think it will be important that we get a look -- we kind of talked about this during the evaluation session with the village manager, but as far as -- and this, I think, will be more for us on council to try to do this, but to try to get a clear, longer-term outlook, especially with respect to things like village recreation assets and things like that. We've had a lot of discussions about this, but I think we, as council, need to really try to get clear of what we mean when we talk about this on our longer-term outlook. And then finally, and this, again, I think hopefully will be the last time I say this is a priority, because it just needs to become one of our just normal things, but communication will again clearly be a big priority. We need to, you know, we -- I think we did a decent job in 2016, given the things going on with the former Gibson property and with Amberly Green and so forth. But we can never communicate enough, and we can never communicate -- we always have to look for better ways to communicate to reach all of our residents. We have the print newsletter, we have e-news, but we really need to find ways to reach all of our residents as often as possible to give them the information with respect to finance and things going on in the village. I do, you know, I think hopefully we continue to get better at this. So that's -- those are kind of what I see as our priorities. Are there any questions or comments? Okay, that concludes my mayor's report. And is there new business?
Yes. Thank you. Yes. A couple of years ago, probably a couple of years ago, I was approached by a resident inquiring about the status of any nondiscrimination ordinance that Amberly may or may not have. And I recently spoke to our solicitor, and we have, in fact, discovered that Amberly's existing ordinances on discrimination are pretty inadequate, old-fashioned, and nothing actually specific there. There is one that is within the housing code and one that pertains to ethnic intimidation. So what I am proposing is that the Health, Education and Welfare Committee meet and take a look at what Amberly has and what other communities are doing in regards to nondiscrimination ordinances or resolutions, and that we update our code in that respect.
I think it's worth noting that, I mean, this is just really good business to do. There's no specific issue that the village is facing, but it's just a case of, it's just good business to periodically look at these things and make sure that we're up to date.
Yes.
Any other new business? If not, we can consider the meeting adjourned. Thank you.